This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first order of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens that would like to comment before we begin this business meeting? Well, hearing none, we'll go ahead and begin. This will be the only time that we on council will have an active part in the discussions that you're going to have in the future. I'm Counselor Arch Davila. I'm one of two co liaisons with Counselor Elaine Marion. In tonight's meeting, this is simply going to be an organizational meeting. Work will actually begin the next time that you meet. Counselor Marion and I will be your voice to City Council. And we will also bring work to you from City Council to work on that may be suggested by other members of council. City Attorney Aaron Silveira will act as our legal representative from the city. And if you look at your agenda in tonight's packet, if you might call it, you'll see that there are four action items to be taken up. The first is introductions of the members. And then the next thing will be to elect officers as a chair, vice chair, and secretary. And the third item will be to set a regular meeting schedule. And then at the very end, we will have Q and A. Questions and answers with city attorney and council liaisons. At the very end, whatever future meeting agenda items that we might want to schedule and add to the next meeting, we'll do that at that time. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me do a roll call. And right after the roll call, we'll begin with introductions by Mr. Durbin. So I have for the people attending this evening, it looks like everybody's here, Mr. Durbin, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Lucero, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Tannehill. I think Mr. Tannehill is caller number one on our screen. So if you would like to begin, well, let me, let me first of all, make the comment about citizen comments, and then we'll get into that. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the committee is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. So do we have anybody out there that would like to address this committee in the way of citizen comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll begin with the member introduction. So we'll go down the line. I'm going to read the names alphabetically, Mr. Durbin, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Lucero, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Tannehill. So if you will begin, Mr. Durbin, by giving us an introduction to yourself, and we'll proceed down the line.
Okay. Robert Durbin, I've been an attorney for 30, almost 34 years now. I have moved to Lago in 2002. I began volunteering for the city in 2010, I believe. Could have been 11, could have been nine, but somewhere back then. And I have volunteered continuously, almost continuously since then. First on the board, on the building committee. And then on the Board of Adjustments. And then I was the chairman of the Board of Adjustments. And then I left that post to become the municipal judge. And I was municipal judge for a little over four years. And then after that, I ran for City Council. And then now I have been reappointed as on the Airport Advisory Committee and the Board of Adjustments again, and I am the chairman again. And now I'm on the Charter Review Committee. I've been, I'm pretty familiar with the charter. I've pointed out differences to council several times between ordinances and where there were discrepancies with the charter and have brought points of the charter forward when necessary during council meetings, when a few items possibly been forgotten. And I'm glad I'm on this committee. I've looked forward to this one for a long time. And I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Mr. Durbin. Mr. Hunt?
Thanks, Arch. I'm Gage Hunt. I am retired about two years ago after spending half of my career in the grocery business as manufacturer's representative, and then the other half managing corporate real estate and properties for Mary Kay Cosmetics globally. I'm currently on the Economic Development Committee here in Lago Vista and on the Building and Standards Commission. I also am a proud member of our Lago Vista Lions Club. So eagerly looking forward to this challenge with the charter. Thanks, Arch.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Ms. Lucero?
Hello, everybody. I am excited to get started and help any way that I can with this. I moved to Lago in 2015. And it took me a little bit to get into the local government here, but when I did, I have enjoyed every second of it. So thank you all for joining me in this committee. And let's see, I am also the treasurer for the Lago Vista Women's Club and the treasurer for the Lago Vista Elementary School PTO, Parent Teacher Organization. And then I am also a board member of the Lake Travis Music Theater and the Hill Country Singers. And I've seen all of you before, so it's good to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Mr. Robbins?
I think most of you guys know me, except probably Carter. I was the city's Lago Vista's Development Service Director, Assistant City Manager from seven to 13. Before that, I was city planner, Development Service Director, Assistant City Manager for a bunch of cities. Before that, I was, first career was in the military. I'm a former council member, recently canned. I'm also the past chair of the last Charter Review Committee. And it's great working with all you guys. I talked to a couple of you, so it looks like a really good group. Good to be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Mr. Roberts?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Roberts. I've been in Lago Vista since 2016. I'm a sixth generation Texan, having grown up in San Antonio. I also lived abroad in, well, outside of the Republic of Texas, up in Tennessee briefly in 98. And my family, my wife and I, Deanna, we live over on the east side of Lago Vista. And I have been involved, as most of you know, going to all the city council meetings, planning zoning meetings for over two years now. And more recently, in the last year, I've been going to every other board and commission meeting. I briefly served for about 10 minutes as councilman to replace Don Barthlo at the end of last year. I'm currently chairman of the Economic Development and Advisory Committee. I'm a member of St. Mary's. I'm also in the Knights of Columbus at St. Mary's. And I am also in the Lions Club here in Lago Vista, which is a fantastic organization. I absolutely love. And I'm looking forward to participating in this. I think we have a great group of people here representing a broad demographic. And I look forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, and Mr. Tannehill.
Yes. I bought property in Lago Vista in 1970 something and built in 2003. So I've been here since 2003. Activities, I was involved or helped run the Fourth of July Committee for the parades and all the activities during the Fourth of July. I am an expert in natural gas processing and treating. And I retired from that business about four years ago. I had a young guy co-author a paper for me on my cost curves. The industry used my cost curves to build gas plants. And I'm a chemical engineer. And after I retired, I began concentrating on coaching tennis with the kids here. I started the Lago Vista Tennis Association with another, with a guy named Mark Long. And we had probably 30 to 40 some kids going through the clinics. I continued to help the coach. He asked me to help coach some of the kids. And so I've been working with them. And the tennis team grew from 12 to maybe 50 or 60 kids now. So it's really taken off and kept me pretty busy.
Thank you, Mr. Tannehill. Well, I welcome everyone and certainly am grateful that you have decided to join us and give some of your time to the city. I think we all have the same idea in mind, which is to do everything possible that we can to make this a better place to live. The city charter, as you know, is the document by which we on City Council basically operate under and kind of live by. And so it's very important that we are able to look at the charter and look for those kinds of things that Mr. Durbin has alluded to. I think Ms. Silveira also has seen some areas in the charter where we have either discrepancies or some things that need to be cleaned up and revised. I'm lost for words here. I think the next order of business that we should go ahead and begin is the election of officers. So we have to elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. So I guess at this point in time, we need to have nominations for those three positions. So I think we should be thinking about chair first, and then we'll go. Right? Any nominations for chairing the Charter Review Committee? Nobody out there?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Frank Robbins. Given that he's got background on the exercise we're about to go through already, I think he'd be a great candidate.
Christina?
I'd like to nominate Judge Rob Durbin, since he has a lifetime of legal expertise.
Okay, we have two nominations. Do we have any seconds to those nominations? I don't really know how to proceed without a second to those nominations.
This is a tough one. I would like to hear from, just some discussion. I would like to hear from both individuals why they would like to chair this committee.
Okay. Since you asked for it, who do you want to go first, Paul?
Well, Rob, you're already going, so have at it.
All right. I'm happy to do it. And I have been, I have been essentially a student of the charter since 2010. It's to some extent, and quite, quite a bit, quite a bit more so since 2015, when I was made judge. I understand it. I understand what the document is. It is effectively the constitution of the city. It's the guiding principles by which it operates. I have noted, I've noted discrepancies. In fact, Frank and I have actually talked several times on various aspects of the charter that need to be changed. And we believe that there are, I think I can, I've worked with, we worked in, from 2010 to 2013, got along well and worked well together. So I don't really see that this is a, you know, a group who got here first sort of a thing. But I also believe that, and Frank is a fantastic city planner, and he was a great civic civil servant. And he was actually, it was a shame the city to lose him as an employee. But I think that a new review should call for new eyes. I don't think, I don't intend to exclude anybody's opinion or anything else. But I think that there's, there's a lot of call out there for some new eyes to take, to take a look at this and, fresh eyes anyway, and see if we can make some changes that will not only correct some of the grammatical errors and silly oversights that it may have in it, but that there are, there are some substantive changes that I think need to be changed in the city due to, due to actions and things that have happened in the city since the last time the council has, or the last time the charter has been modified. So I would look forward to that. I know how to run a meeting. I will keep you here all that long. I have plans for the future agendas, so we're ready to go. Like, you know, we'll get the ground running.
I think Arch said something, but I didn't hear it.
Mr. Robbins? Can we hear from you?
Rob, we hadn't figured out that we were going to be running against each other.
I know.
I can't, I can't get even the spot.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Rob? Okay.
Rob and I go back a ways. I would just echo that Rob's a really good guy, that he knows, I agree with everything he said. With respect to my chairmanship in there, done that, we were fairly effective, I think. I can run the meetings. You can't lose with either one of us, I don't think. I know Rob, Rob knows me. I'm good either way, folks.
Thanks, Frank. Back at you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. So I have two nominations. Two nominations. Do I hear a second for either or both? We're going to be stuck here until somebody's nomination is seconded.
I'll second, I'll second for Robert Durbin.
Thank you, Mr. Tannehill. I have, I have a second for Mr. Durbin. So shall we vote? Okay.
I think.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor of electing Mr. Durbin?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all.
Sorry.
I, do I get a vote for myself? I didn't, I thought I was going to stay out of it, but. If you were waiting for me, Arch. If you were waiting on me, it was an aye.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robbins as vice chair.
I'll second that. Arch, you're cutting out pretty bad. Do you want Shalane to take over?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Arch. I think you may have a poor connection. I'm happy to step in in the meantime, Arch, until you can get your.
Okay, I have a nomination in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Oops, now I'm hearing it kind of delayed.
The lag on your statements, Arch.
Yeah, one, two, do that, Shalane.
Thanks, Arch. I'll do that. So it sounded like we had, I'm sorry, but it sounded like we had a nomination for vice chair, Frank Robbins, and a second. And I heard Mr. Davila's delayed call for a vote coming. Can we retake that vote? So all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, sounds like it's unanimous.
Who was our second?
I was.
Second for that was Rob Durbin. Okay, so do we have anyone who would like to nominate someone as secretary for the committee?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Lucero as secretary. She has a fine attention to detail with numbers and kind of detail or an individual, if she's willing.
Mrs. Lucero, are you willing? Is there a second?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch who that was.
Mr. Robbins.
Okay. So we have a nomination for Christina Lucero for secretary, seconded by Frank Robbins. Any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Also seems like it was unanimous. So we've got Chair Robert Durbin, Vice Chair Frank Robbins, and Secretary Christina Lucero. Great. So the next thing on the agenda for this evening then is to set a regular meeting schedule. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the committee, see if anybody on the committee has any suggestions for a more regular date or day of the month, or how frequent you think we should have these meetings and a start time.
Point of order. Point of order. Mr. Durbin, you're running the vote now.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Not a problem. I was trying to step in, but I didn't want to interrupt Shalane.
That's all right.
I would like to ask Aaron, Aaron, if there's a particular night during the week that is not occupied by a bunch of committee meetings and things like that. Because we have, I know Mr. Hunt's on a committee or two. I'm on a couple of them. And both Arch and Shalane, and yep, Paul's on some, one. And so everybody's got a full plate here. We want to try to wedge it in.
So Mondays are open for me. Most Wednesdays are open, and only the last Thursday of the month is open.
Okay. And I'm not familiar, Mr. with y'all's regular schedules, who's got, who's got day jobs besides me? But.
Mr. Chairman, Monday evenings for myself would be best. And it sounds like the city, Mondays are ideal for the city as well as Aaron. And I don't know about others, but for me, Monday evenings would be best.
Okay. I like to try to keep the meetings fairly short and effective and concise with maybe, maybe a little more homework than some of them have. But that way, we can, we can go through them. Does Monday at 6:30? And we'll try to get them done within an hour or hour and a half. Work for everybody. Yes?
Mondays are, Mondays are not good for me.
No?
But any other day is okay. This is Carter.
Okay, Carter. And we were, we were thinking, I was thinking evenings, but if Mondays are bad all the way around, we'll take a look. Council meetings are on Thursdays, so they're out.
Rob, what's the, have we decided on the frequency? Are we talking weekly or monthly or biweekly? What?
For, for, well, our problem with this is we're on a deadline. Like, unlike most committees where you can kind of mess around a little bit, we're on, what, a 72 day deadline? Aaron, something like that? It's.
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, so we've, we've got a, we've got a scoop pretty good. And I think we could try, we could try biweekly. And then, and then try, and all of us kind of make a commitment to do some things in between, so that when we, when we get there, we can get some stuff done, if that makes sense. Frank? Yes, sir?
Yeah. You're running the vote, but you're going to get me in here every once in a while, like how it happened last time. One of the, one of the good things that we get moved pretty quickly last time, is we met weekly, and it was fresh.
Yeah.
So.
I liked to meet weekly.
Yeah. But I just said that. Folks, folks remember what we did in the last week.
Yeah. How about, how about Wednesdays at 6:30? Is that an object? Anybody got, that's good with you, Frank? Mr. Roberts?
I've got a conflict once a month on that.
Mondays or even Friday evenings would be best for me. I've got my children, my wife works typically on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It isn't home until 8:30, and I've got young kids.
Yeah.
And then inundated with work. Mondays tend to be the lightest workdays for me, sort of. But if we're doing this weekly, how many, Frank, did you all utilize every week from the start until the deadline last time?
Yeah, I don't remember if we started meeting weekly. We probably did, but I don't remember initially if the first meeting was the next week or not. Paul, can I, so that, Carter, can I ask what the conflict is on Mondays?
Right now, the conflict is the North Shore Republicans.
Is there any way you can postpone it for 72 days?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, maybe the second Monday of the month or something like that. But they may have first Monday and second Monday. I don't know. Right now, I'm not involved.
North Shore Republicans, we don't even have a board right now. It's just happy hours.
Right.
So I would, I would motion move that we have, everybody seems to, it seems that Monday seems to be most conducive to everyone's schedules, including.
The fact that they're, the fact that they are weekly, it's, it's not uncalled for or a crisis if one person has to miss a Monday here and there. That's, that's not a big deal. The, Carter, can you, can you, can you live with Mondays at 6:30?
I can. I mean, I prefer Wednesday.
Well, the problem is, is I think we're going to run into. Well, but the problem is, is I think we're gonna run into all right, I'll open it up for any other days besides Mondays and Wednesdays, since those both seem to conflict out one person or another.
Well, Thursdays are city council and.
Thursdays are city councils. Weekends are generally not good. Is there a particular time on the North Shore Republicans meet? I don't know. Paul, you're in that, aren't you?
I am. And it's, it's literally none, there's nothing going on right now. Happy hours, and Jane is driving that, even though she's not, there is no formal existence of it. And it's, it's one. I don't really have any comment on it, to be honest with you, Rob.
The reason for Monday is, that's when the North Shore Republicans met. That's when they had their meetings. They would have their meetings on Monday at the Blue Bonnet Room. We would have activities, speakers coming in from out of town like Allen West. That wouldn't have to necessarily be on a Monday, but right now, it's, it's in the process of getting organized.
Okay, are, are you organizing it?
Uh, well, I was the past president.
Okay.
And my wife was treasurer. But we're both involved in it. And plan to stay involved in it.
Sure, sure. I mean, if, if they're not conducting regular meetings, though, I mean, can we at least start our, can we at least start this off on Mondays? And then obviously, if, if it gets organized and gets going, Mr. Roberts is a member of that organization as well, I think, and I don't know, somebody else might be as, also. But if it gets going, can you let us know, and then we can try to work out a, a different date? Maybe things will free up for other people at that time.
Yeah, I, I'd say that would, that would be fine with me. I, I just would suggest that we talk about Wednesday. Unless that's a big problem for somebody.
I, I only have, my only conflict on Wednesday is the first Wednesday of each month that's Building and Standards Commission. So y'all would just have to excuse me on those two nights.
Well, and I would have to be there as well.
Not good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the second Wednesday of each month, if I'm, if I'm allowed to say, is also Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, well, Aaron, is, is a Board of Adjustments on Mondays?
Um, I think it is on Mondays.
It is on Monday.
They used to meet during the day.
We do to meet during the day. Well, the like, actually, the last time I don't think we did, but I, I'm the chairman of it. I'll move it during, I'll move it if we need to. But I think our regular meetings is the first Monday of the month. What, and do you know what time, Aaron?
I think historically it had been at 3:30, but, you know, I mean, obviously, that's 72 adjustments, it's not set.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Let's, let's, yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, we're all, we're all squishing and crunching here, Carter. Can you, can you work with us?
Well, yeah, and, you know, the tennis lessons I have with the kids, I can, they're, they're very good about rearranging those, so I'll do whatever the rest of the group decide.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move it, we meet Monday at 6:30.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Mondays at 6:30 it is, and Carter, if things start to get tight or something, let us know, and, you know, we, we we'll, we can revisit it at a, at a later time if the Republicans get their act together. Fair enough?
And that's Monday, every Monday of the, every, every Monday of the week. Every Monday of the month.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's start off weekly, because we got a, we got a lot to basically get organized. We may be able to, to push, to do less later, but I think, I'd rather get ahead of it than be behind it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so Mondays at 6:30 it is. And all right, moving on to the next agenda item, it's Q and A with city attorney and council liaisons. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Silveira?
I do.
Okay, get it.
Aaron, has communication been sent out to all of our members to make sure everyone's taken the Texas Open Meetings Act training? Certification?
I haven't sent that out, but.
I think it's the liaisons who are supposed to do that.
Frank might be one of the only folks not on a current board, commission, or committee.
And Carter.
And Carter, yeah. So we can. Oh, Chris, I thought Christina was on something, so, okay, I can send out a link for that.
Okay, what was, what was the question?
As, the question was, has information been sent to individuals for taking the Texas Open Meetings Act training and certification?
I believe Sandra did. I, I received something from Sandra just the other day.
Yeah, I am certified.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. So could we, you'll shoot that to us, Aaron?
Yeah, if you, I'll, I'll check with Sandra and verify that she hasn't already sent it out. Obviously, you'll have to take it again if you've already taken it.
I have another question. Aaron, I know our, our city council follows the Rosenberg, Rosenberg rules of procedure. So I presume that those will apply to us, or do we need to choose between Rosenberg's Rules of Procedures and Roberts' rules, or, and Roberts' Rules of Procedure? I presume the former applies.
Mr. Robbins want to say, ask question? That was the, Rosenberg says the official adopted Rules of Procedure for.
It applies to everything.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Robbins had something to say.
Yes, okay, Mr., I want to make it sure that Mr. Roberts was satisfied with his answer.
Thank you.
Well, no, I just. Yeah. Most of us are. Rob, you, uh, let me just cut to the chase. I think it's, if you cannot follow Roberts or Rosenberg's to the letter. You guys got a good share. I think at the next meeting, he might want to talk about how he wants to run meetings and rules of procedure, as opposed to adopting some strict Rosenberg or Roberts system. But that's a call Rob gets to make.
Okay, sure. And, and we have Aaron here to, to help guide us on, on that sort of thing. If she's gonna, you planning on attending all of them, Aaron?
That was the request by our council members, yes.
Okay. So we have Aaron here to assist on stuff like that, and I will, I'll get some procedures out, and I'll publish those before our next meeting. Make a note.
Mr. Durbin?
Yes. Uh, Councilman Donovan?
Yes. Mr. Durbin, we, we adopted the Rules of Procedure a couple of years ago, and they apply to all committees, commissions, and boards. So you have to follow the Rosenberg's Rules of Procedure. That, that's an ordinance.
Well, I'll review the ordinances then. And if I make any, any sort of modifications, or express a little bit of preference for how things should run, to keep things moving, so that we don't get bogged down in a bunch of procedural tiki-tacky back and forth, I will lay those out. Okay, I will send out an email regarding, regarding procedure before our next meeting. All right. Did everybody get a copy, a searchable copy of the charter from, I think Councilman Marion sent those out? I received mine, I want to make sure everybody else got one.
I did. Is it search, is it actually searchable with Control App?
With the PDF? Yeah, it is. It is, as, as well as PDF search anyway, but yeah, it's, I tried it, I was able to search through it. One thing I might ask is, if we have a if we have a Word copy of it, could we get that too, so that we can make red line changes, so that everybody can see for drafting purposes? Hopefully, there is a Word copy of the document out there. If not, I can convert it, but sometimes the conversions aren't are particularly accurate, when you convert from PDFs to Word. Can, I guess, I can check with Sandra and see if she's got, that's where it would be if we got one, right, Aaron?
That's right.
I'll check with her.
You've got one. The city's got one.
Yeah, okay, that way when we make, start making proposals for changes, we can, everybody, if they're not familiar with the review portion of Word, fiddle around with it, so that we can learn it, live it, love it. That way you can see everything that's, it'll produce a red line with crossouts. And it's much easier to determine, to see what's going on and what's been eliminated than, than the, the current one. Yes, Mr. Robbins?
No, no, you're.
Okay. Also, in what I would make a note of that, hang on. Okay, if you've not read the Charter, or been, or you're very, not very familiar with it, there is a section that I would like to point everybody to. It is section let's see. And I'll, I'll just give you a brief overview of what it says. In addition to talking about how often there has to be a charter review, and this and that, the other thing, it does contain, it does contain some some language regarding what we are supposed to be doing. So I would like to follow it. One of the things it says is, "The committee shall inquire into the operations of the city government as related to the charter, and review the charter to determine if amendments should be recommended." In the spirit of that, all right, and I'm a little wonky on this kind of stuff, so bear with me, and I don't expect y'all to do, to grind through this thing in, in in ultra, ultra detail, but I, there are essentially two aspects that I would like to cover. I would like, if each of us could make a list of things that they feel in terms of operations of the city, that, that may need to be addressed in the charter, so that we can look at, look at those, and then also, as you read through the charter, I would ask that you take a look, and effectively, we're also six proofreaders here too, and there are grammatical things, there's clumsy language, there's, there's a lot of stuff in it. If, either, either make notes, or even if it's, even if you just circle a, a section and say, you know, what the hell are they talking about here? That's fine. But to me, that's something that needs to be addressed. It should be readable. And we will, that way we can start to focus on, on the things, and a lot of the, a lot of the fixes, I think, will be not very controversial or anything else, but I would like, I would like you to the, the tough part is, is, you know, over the past few years, think about the operations of the city, and how we can address the charter to help the city run smoother, better, with less, with less rancor, because I, I, I for one would like to see a lot of the citizens get back on the same page and focused in the same direction. I'm a big, I'm a big believer in small ball. That is, if, if there's easy agreements on everything, that's great. If, let's make, let's do those. If there's, if there's some, some great big ones, then they would require a lot more consensus, as far as, as far as we're, we're, we're looking at here, so. But let's, let's take care of the easy ones first, so we know what we need to focus on the rest of our, the rest of our committee's life. And with that, I will open it up. Is there anything, anything else people would, would, and for our next, for our next agenda, that's what I would like to see on the agenda, is kind of a, a review of the members' ideas as to a, essentially a proofread of the charter, and a, a maybe a list of government, of the city's operations that we need to possibly address in this. Okay, Mr. Robbins, yes, sir?
Two things. I got a question for Aaron. My understanding is you've got some issues with the charter and ordinances, as actually I think Rob mentioned. Is that correct?
You're muted, Aaron.
You're muted, you're muted. Aaron, you're muted.
She got it.
Thanks. I pointed out in a couple of council meetings that there are some inconsistencies between the charter and the ordinances. Now, the reality is, is that the ordinances should be, be adjusted to meet the charter and not vice versa, unless there's a larger schematical issue in the way that the, the city is functioning. You don't normally, because the charter carries so much more weight and has to be voted on by the citizens, so it's all, the collective approval, and not just the approval of those who've been elected. You know, my recommendation is regularly to amend the ordinances to match the charter, and not make wholesale changes to the charter, so that it fits the narrative of an ordinance.
Rob, can I, can I have a conversation with her a minute?
Sure.
Yeah. I guess, first question, another question is, are you gonna be our staff liaison? Back to the staff.
I, I think by de facto, I probably am, since I'm the one. Now, I will tell you, and, and your chairman knows full well, as he's familiar with the charter as well, that you can call folks that are, request presence of other department heads to inquire about their portion, or their contribution to the city's functions, as it relates to the charter. It's not an open-ended opportunity to quiz staff on anything, but as it relates specifically to the charter, you can call those folks, or request their presence at, that presence at a meeting.
Or request documents, yeah. Go ahead.
I may be tracking on a couple of issues that you've raised, with respect to questions to council liaison, city attorney, and the next meeting. I think, Rob, you indicated you'd like to build a list. It, to start building, and then my question, and hope, or suggestion, whatever you want to call it, to the council and Aaron. And this also relates to, and I'm looking at the phrase, but I won't read it now. It's the council, which essentially asks, is the council acting in accordance with the charter, which actually was something that, like the 2000 It's the council, which essentially asks, is the council acting in accordance with the charter, which actually was something that, like the 2009 committee did, and that's about all they did. But Erin, you've got stuff that you want, that you think is inconsistent. It remains to be seen, for I think, for Rob, for this committee, which one ought to take precedence, and I would hope, or suggest, if, if the staff couldn't give us what their recommendations are as part of the list for possible changes. And, and now, we could evaluate what we like the staff says, but Rob, you and I know, when you and I've talked, and Erin and I, and I think the three, there may be three of us that are in the same place, there's some stuff in the ordinances that might be better than the charter. And my question is, Erin, do you, are you comfortable in telling us what your opinion is about that? And then giving that information to the committee?
I think that's my job.
Yeah, and, and Erin, we, if you have areas of conflicts noted between the charter and ordinances, I think, I think we, we'd be foolhardy to not look at that list at some point. Just in case the ordinance, ordinance had a better idea or something along the way, but I agree with you in terms of, of the charter being more of a fundamental document that the, that the ordinance, the ordinances need to fit. We don't necessarily want to make big wholesale changes. Mr. Roberts, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wonder, and I'm just positive in this question allowed, the best way to receive those lists of recommendations, it seems to me, would be in a red line version from staff as an agenda item. What, what, or do we just leave it as a broad topic agenda item in which the staff can come in, you know, so there's way different ways of doing that. Do we get a red line, these specific items that were, that were alluding to? Do we get those red lined and then in, in an agenda pack, package, subject to an agenda item? Or is it a broad agenda topic that would encompass that without it being included in the packet? You know?
Well, it, the, what I, what I am thinking is that at some point, we would get a list of the, of ordinances that Erin has probably kept a running list sitting on the side of her desk that says, this, this ordinance is not consistent with this charter item, and, and take it from there. I, I, you know, and, and rather than, rather than require, asking her to rewrite the stuff, I, I think we'd, it'd be better to take a look at the two, and for us to decide, you know, this, this ordinance just needs to be amended, or yeah, that's, that's a good idea, and then we'll take it from there.
So procedurally though, as far as these meetings are concerned, what is the presentation? Is it just, here's the list, here it is in writing? Is that part of our agenda? Is that going to be an agenda item? Is it?
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking Ms. Silvera to, to think about it and, and have a list like that prepared at some point. I'm not ready to stick that on the agenda yet. I'm not sure. I, I mean, I think we all need to get familiar with, with the charter in a little more granular detail than we probably have in the past prior to, prior to that, because some of the things we may want to do are going to fix or completely eliminate what she has in mind. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Robbins?
Is it okay if I move to five? Which is items for the next agenda?
Yes.
And this, this to some extent replies to Paul's comment. I think we ought to build the list, and that, that list is going to come from a bunch of folks, us,
Yep.
staff, and what I suggested earlier was that if Erin's the staff rep, she get with the rest of the staff, which happened, and I think that certainly it was a major issue with the 2009 committee, in which they actually interviewed, I'm not suggesting we do that, but that we get, and, and we've got a, we, I'll just say this. We've got a, an Antrim city manager who's been around. He might have some interesting ideas. We're going to have some folks, hi, Letha, that might have some stuff for us. And so that, I, I, I think that, Ms. Chairman, at the next meeting, that we build the lit, begin to build the list.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, no, I, I, I want to, that's what I'm saying is, I mean, my initial deal was to collect it from ourselves, and have ourselves preparing lists effectively individually, as well as Erin, I'm sure, has one that says, you know, you know, this ordinance just doesn't match up with this charter thing at all. So I'd like to get the ones that need to be, take a look at least the ones that need to be fixed, so that we can at least send them on to city council and say, hey, guys, you know, this, we're not going to change the charter on this, so you need to get going on your, change the ordinances, which essentially gets it off of our table anyway. But yeah, I mean, as far, you know, these are public, public hearings, and hopefully, some members of the public will step forward and, and, and tell us some of the things that they believe needs to be fixed. A lot of the public does not have a, you know, in-depth idea of, of the relationship between the charter and ordinances and city governance, but hopefully, we can individually collect some ideas from people, and you know, I've, I've, I've heard from some folks, and I mean, there are ideas that I'm going to put forward, that I'm going to say, look, I don't think this is necessarily a great idea, but I've heard a lot of, I've heard several people ask me for it, or bring it up. So I would love to get the public more involved, but I mean, it's, this is, this is pretty, this is pretty ditty gritty stuff, so we're the ones that are supposed to really be focused on it, so I'd like to get us really familiar with it as best we can first, if that makes sense. Ms. Lucero, please.
Are we planning on working on it in page order, just kind of going through the whole document?
At some point, yes, we will start to go through it, and like I said, effectively do a, a read through, and I'm probably going to set a date for essentially just a grammatical read through, where we're not messing with substance, we're just cleaning up language. And and hopefully, we will, you know, we can, we can do that fairly smoothly. I don't think there'll be a lot of argument, because there's a lot of language in there that's just not very, not very well scribed. Let's put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But, but the, you know, in terms of substantive changes, I suspect those will probably take a little more discussion. Yes, Mr. Robbins?
Rob, Erin, this question for Erin, and I know where Rob's coming from. Been in, again, and I've talked about it. Is there such a thing as a, Erin, is there such a thing as a Scrivener's error for charters, in which it was an example of a Scrivener's error, and you know, you guys know what I mean. Rob and Erin know what I'm talking about. Certainly.
There's a lot of Scrivener's errors in there. That's what we're saying, I hope.
Rob, I'm with you. The question is, do those need to go to the voters too? Do we need to put all those Scrivener's error on the ballot?
I think we do.
Yes, every change that you're going to make, now, what, the way you do it is, well, there's two ways to approach it. One, you include it as a, as a reference item that in, that denotes that you're going to make certain corrections, grammatical, those types of corrections. You don't go through and list every single one. You can do it in the general. You just need to get the authority from the voters to make those corrections. Or you can actually put them all on there. I don't recommend putting them all on there, because the product that you have to come up with is a list of items that will go to council for a vote, that will end up being language on a ballot. So it needs to be clear for the voters. Usually, any typographical errors, you don't go through the full list of all the potential typographical errors you want to change. You simply have a, an item on the ballot that allows, asking for permission to make those corrections. We need to track it in red line, but you wouldn't necessarily have it on the ballot itself.
You'll have, you'll have something on the ballot that says, you know, one of the items will be, you know, there's several grammatical spelling and punctuation errors have been corrected without changing the substance of that particular, of a particular, unless otherwise noted above, or something like that. Yeah. Okay. All right. In that, in that case, for, I would say, for the next, next agenda, the next agenda, since it's only, well, this is Thursday, why don't we, can we skip this next Monday and go to the following Monday, so that we can get some things done between now and then? We'll have our regular council meeting starting on Monday, the our regular committee meeting, excuse me. Not trying to take your job, Shalane.
The fifth? No, the 12th.
Crap, I can't find my calendar. There it is. Rather than meet, well, this is the 26th, rather than meet on the 29th, yeah. Well, the 5th is, 5th is, is the day after Easter.
Right.
Is that, well, Easter's a holiday. Good Friday's a holiday. I don't consider the day after Easter a holiday. Is everybody else available that day? Let's, let's make our next meeting that day, April 5th, or March, yeah, April 5th. Shalane?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. Monday, the 5th is when we are scheduled for the council workshop on the park, on Lagavista Sunset Park. Erin, is that going to be a problem? Are you going to need to be at that workshop? Because I know Councilor Davila and I will be.
Yes, I'll be at that workshop regarding the park. I didn't think we actually had it set for the 5th yet, but if that's
Council, at the last council meeting, the mayor said the 5th was the date at 6 o'clock or 6:30. I don't remember the time.
Okay. If, if he set the date, that's the date.
Okay. Ms. Lucero?
Since we're just still early on in the discussion time and not actually setting stuff, does Ms. Silvera need to be there? If Mr. Davila and Mr. Marion are not going to be there either, can it just be like a rough session?
Rough session for us?
How would you feel about that, Ms. Silvera?
I don't have a problem with that. I, Mr. Robbins?
We can, might go later. I don't know how long the meeting's going to go. Guys, the council members need to help us with that.
Help us with what?
Well, how long do you, the, the meeting is scheduled at 6:00 on the 5th? Is that correct?
Are you talking about the workshop? The workshop is scheduled for the 5th, yes. It's scheduled to be a couple of hours.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we could go later, Mr. Chairman, and assume a couple hour, council with a couple hours, and then we could go later. I don't know.
So starting now.
Where, Erin, Arch and?
The only limitation or, or issue you may have is, right now, you, this is all scheduled to be on go-to. And it's all, we've made a commitment to the public to have all of these meetings recorded for the public's benefit, because this is their biggest chance to make a big change for the city. So you have to have a facilitator, and Dave Street's going to be running the meeting for the parks workshop. And so you have to have somebody else at the city who has, can be made an organizer, so it's either me or Roy Jamboor has, can do it. So you just have to find somebody else who can do your go-to for you and record it, who has access to dump the recording into the city server.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's do this, then. We can't, my suggestion is going to be to give ourselves a little extra homework, then, and have the next meeting be April, set the 12th? April 12th, okay? And that should give us plenty of time to do a read through for each of us, and I'm not, I'm not asking that you draft, draft corrections or anything like that. If you, if you see anything in it that looks out of whack, or under, not understandable, or I would like to make this document more reader-friendly for the public as well. If you see something that is legally easy looking, I can't believe I'm, you know, I get paid by the word and I get paid to write that stuff, but I would like to get it out of this document. So let's, if you would make a notation on your draft as to that sort of thing, and I would also ask the members to, and perhaps give me a call. I will circulate my phone number and on an email, and give me, give me a call if you have anything that you, that you, you know, there's, there's duty to, to inquire into the operations of the city government to, to see if there is anything that we can do. I mean, it, it is a, it is not a request, it's not a may, it says the committee shall inquire. So let me know what sort of inquiries that you are initially thinking of to making into the city government, and if you do that by phone or whatever, then we'll bring it up at the meeting and discuss it, and I will probably talk to you about how those inquiries would get done anyhow. Because if you don't have any experience at it, or aren't used to, you know, doing, doing discovery or whatever, and I want to keep it focused on charter stuff. Yes, Mr. Robbins?
Yes. It's open beginning's question, and I, I like what you said, Ma, Ms. Chairman. I appreciate it. I think that's the right way to go about it. So individual members are going to, going to send you their stuff. You can't reply to any of that stuff.
Not, not till the meeting.
I got it. Thanks.
And then at the meeting, at the meeting, I bring it forward and say this, these are the requests that I got. This is, this is what I think we ought to do in terms of, to address them, and let's go, let's go forward, go get that information, so that we can start focusing on substantive stuff. But you know, initially, just set it next to the bed, or wherever one reads, which I won't go into, and just read through it, have a red pen with you, or a blue pen, and make some notations on it, so that we, we're all looking at, you know, we're all liable to find different errors, because I'm, I'm, Because I'm, I'm, I like to write, but I'm a terrible proofreader, quite frankly, particularly of my own work. Thank God I didn't write any of this stuff. But, uh, let's, let's do that. And then as questions start to come in, we'll set it, I'll set an agenda for the 12th that has, um, that, that moves us forward a little bit more and I'll, we'll try to get as much done since we wound up missing a week. But that will be the start of our regular meetings, if that works. Fair enough?
Is that a regular meeting going to be accessible by phone or is that going to be in person?
Uh, for, for right now, uh, till things change, it'll be on here on go-to meetings.
Oh, that'll be good for me because I'll be in South Padre Island.
Good, oh, good for you. All right. So, yes, uh, Mr. Robbins?
I got a question for Carter. Do you know the former quarterback for Texas A&amp;M?
You mean my grandson, Ryan?
You're kidding?
No, I adopted him.
Dig him, dig him. He's the best quarterback A&amp;M has ever had. That's wonderful. Thanks.
And it's kind of weird because he started, he started out as a tight end, but yeah.
I know. Right.
He's from, uh, Big Springs, Texas, so he's a Texan and he's a, he's really a good kid.
That's good. He is that, um, been around a while too. Um, okay. I think that covers it for, uh, Ms. Silvera?
Um, one, just one, uh, note for you, Mr. Chairman. Um, by my calculations, the, the, according, unless the legislature changes the schedule, um, the council has to take a vote on any items that are going to go on the ballot by August 5th. Which, if you back that date up, you have July 29th would be the last time to get information to the council. So if you want to back that date up again, and so that's 126 days from now. Um, so that being, um, said, that's, one of the things your committee might consider is kind of setting up a framework for a schedule of, um, milestones to hit so that you can meet that, uh, July 29th council agenda deadline. I would anticipate that you might go to council sooner than that, just in case they don't vote immediately at that, that council meeting on your, um, on the items. Because I would expect that you would, there may be, um, quite a bit of discussion, depending on the kinds of things that you bring forward. So, um, you might want to anticipate having everything ready by the beginning of July and, and having a framework for your schedule, uh, at, you know, discussing that at your next meeting might be a good, uh, topic so that y'all know kind of what you need to hit as far as timeframes.
Yes, yeah. And, um, when, whenever we, whenever we do get this to council or it gets on their agenda, whether it's a discussion item or an action item for them, um, I, hopefully, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be present. Hopefully, Mr. Robbins will be present. We'll present a united front and, uh, um, and a coherent argument as to, uh, what we're trying to get done and, um, deliver it effectively. But, uh, yeah, I will, um, July 29th, the last council meeting that they could vote on it.
That, that is the deadline to get the documents to Sandra so she can have it on the council meeting on August 5th. August 5th is the last opportunity for council to vote on it. Um, obviously I would recommend having it at least one council meeting back. So two weeks back from July 29th would be your deadline to get, have those documents ready into Sandra.
Okay. All right. That sounds, that sounds good. I think we can do that. Um, Ms. Lucero?
I'm just wondering if we have to get this all to them at the same time? Or can it kind of be flowed to them in little parts and pieces or anything like that?
I don't think we want to flow it to them in pieces, um, but I think we'd need to get it to them, um, uh, as, as early as we can. And, um, uh, even if it's a, even if we're all agreed on in principle and we're just, you know, we're final drafting a, a rough draft to give them an idea of what's coming. Otherwise, you know, we don't want them to lock up on us. Okay? All right. Um, I don't have anything else for tonight. I will be, uh, circulating information by email. And, um, um, anybody have a motion? Move to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, we'll see you the 12th and I will, meetings adjourned and we'll see you the 12th. And, um, we'll get some, uh, some lists of homework out. And, um, we'll try to make that as productive a meeting as possible. And the more homework we can get done, we do, I think, the faster we can go through the meetings. So we're not taking up your entire Monday nights. Fair enough? Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.